Good evening. Today is October 24th, 2023. The time is now 5:30 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. I do look around and I see that we do have a quorum to proceed. Welcome to all of you to our regular county council meeting. We will begin this meeting with the invocation given by Councilman Carolina, and he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance also.
Heavenly Father, we come together this day asking for guidance, wisdom, support, and peace in this world. As we begin this meeting, bring us together as elected officials in nurturing the bonds of our communities. Strengthen and bless this country as we go through challenging times in America and the conflicts currently experienced in parts of the world. Our prayers are for peaceful coexistence with mankind throughout the world. Let us continue to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending our Constitution, which is the basis for this country's foundation. Continue to remind us that all we do as stewards over the land is for the greater glory of you in service to humanity and progress in Georgetown County. Continued peace and blessings to all in our county, state, country, and worldwide in your mighty name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. We move on down to our approval agenda. Is there motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
A move.
It's moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We're going down to our special reports and presentations. Tonight, our nonprofit spotlight is going to be the Diabetes Core Group with the founder Joyce Lennon. The co-founder, I should say. I mean, I had a founder assistant, I should say. Ms. Joyce Lynn will make the presentation on behalf of the Diabetes Core Group.
Good evening. Again, my name is Joyce Lennon, and I am the executive director for the Georgetown County Diabetes Core Group. First, let me take this opportunity to thank you for allowing me to come before you to talk about our nonprofit. Georgetown County Diabetes Core Group is a small nonprofit organization located in the Choppie Health Complex. First, before I move forward, it's very important to give you a little bit of history of the Georgetown County Diabetes Core Group. It was one day with a young lady who was dealing with diabetes herself, was invited to attend a training called Diabetes Today given by the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control. When this young lady went to the diet training, she learned so much information about diabetes the more than she ever did while dealing with diabetes for over 12 years. So once she left that meeting, she came back home, and she was ready to bring the awareness about diabetes in Georgetown County. So this young lady founded a group, started having meetings in churches and community centers, bringing about the awareness about diabetes. And from that day forward, the organization moved forward, and we have been in existence for 26 years. And then it would be, it won't be, not be right for me to not recognize this lady that founded, Ms. Florine Lennon. If she would quickly stand so we can see who she is. She is the inspiration, the brains of everything behind the Georgetown County Diabetes Core Group. Like I said, for 26 years, she worked hard, sweat, have people with her, educating and bringing about the awareness of diabetes and its related diseases. So Georgetown County Diabetes Core Group, our mission is, again, to educate the people and the residents of Georgetown County about diabetes and its related diseases. What we do, we focus mainly on those who are uninsured and underinsured. And how we support them and how we, the work we do, we offer diabetes education classes, diabetes support groups. We've done cooking demonstrations. We have provided them with free health quarterly health screenings, fitness classes, and among many other things. We also provide financial assistance to those who can't afford their medication or who are going to miss a doctor appointment because they can't afford the co-pay or just the doctor's visit. So with that being said, over the years, things have changed, people change. Our volunteers have gone on to be with the Lord or have been too old now to volunteer. So we've got a new group of volunteers, and we're doing a little bit more things and a little different. Our main focus now, we have a slogan we call "We Choose Life." And when we choose life, we want people to know that just because you're diagnosed with diabetes, that doesn't mean that your life ends. You still can live a healthy and productive life long as you're doing what you need to do to maintain and control your diabetes. One of our biggest project now that we're doing, we are providing court kits. And I have one of these court kits there, so you can see. And in this box, this, we have a glucometer, a lancet, alcohol squads, and strips. So for people who are newly diagnosed with diabetes or are having problems controlling their diabetes, we provide them with this kit. And we distribute these kits throughout the community because we want them to be educated and know how to control their diabetes. Again, I say thank you for this opportunity, for allowing me to talk a little bit about the Georgetown County Diabetes Core Group. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lennon. Are there any questions, comments from council to Ms. Lennon?
Ms. Lennon, both Ms. Lennons and ladies with the organization, we appreciate your service to this community, how you've educated people, and that education has moved on to save lives in many cases. So again, continue your outstanding work to the community, and have a way in the future that we can support you. We are here to support you. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question, and I do this because you are on television tonight. And I'm going to ask you, how do you receive your donations so that people can reach out to you and help you?
Okay. We receive our donations from grant funding, fundraising, and we do accept private donations as well.
You got a website or anything?
Yes, we do. We have a website. It's www.getowndiabetescore.org.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Ms. Lennon, you are due sessions within the community also. You are invited to a particular forum. You are, do you attend those forums and try to provide information to the community?
Yes, we do. We do attend these forums. And you know, one of the things I should have mentioned to you, over the 26 years of work, one of our greatest accomplishments, our success, is when, back in 2004, working with the Medical University of South Carolina, we reduced the amputation rate among African Americans by to 49.6%. This information is documented in the Journal of American Medical Association that was published by the University of Chicago. So we are out in the community, educating people from a community-based standpoint. Our training is continuously, and we get a lot of our trainings through the medical university because they partner with us, and they, they had a grant called the Reach CC through the Centers of Disease Control. So a lot of our trainings came from there, and like you said, we are out in the community. Anybody who invite us to their churches, their community organizations, we are more than happy to go and talk about diabetes and be of a support to the county.
You mentioned also that some of your prior volunteers are aging out, so you are open to volunteers within your organization too?
Yes, we are always open to volunteers, whether it's just being at an event, answering the telephone, whatever you can do will help. We'll be more than happy to have you, whatever time you can give us, whether it's an hour or two. And I wanted to say also to you that the Georgetown County Diabetes Core Group is a volunteer-driven organization. Nobody gets paid to work for the Georgetown County Diabetes Core Group. Everybody volunteers their service, even myself, as the executive director, is all volunteer. Nothing is paid to you. On occasion, we may have a lunch and dinner, but we do not get paid for the service we render to the county.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lennon. And again, thank you also for all you do for Georgetown County and the state. We'll move on down to our public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with the clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Please note that at the expiration of your time, the buzzer will go off. You'll see your time countdown on the screen, which will be in front of you or one of the monitors to your left or right. So we ask you to promptly conclude your statement at the conclusion of your time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to speak during public comments this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we have 14 speakers signed up tonight. Each will have up to two minutes, and our first speaker is Chris Spigner.
Hi, I'm Chris Spigner, and I'm here regarding the proposed boat landing ordinance change. I am asking for an amendment that would allow larger Coast Guard approved tourist charter boats up to 40 feet and carrying up to 40 passengers to utilize the Carol Ashmore Campbell Marine Complex only. These activities will in turn attract more tourism and support for our tourism economy and stewardship of our coastal resources in Georgetown County. Granting access to larger boats will enable more local families and tourist groups to enjoy our waterways, get a deeper appreciation of the benefits they offer, and inspire greater stewardship of our local lands and water. Denying access to these boats could be a significant loss for our sector of local tourism in Georgetown that promotes nature-based education and the activity of experience in our natural resources. We have larger families with more than six members that will be denied access to affordable tours. The cost of chartering a six-pack tour boat is out of many families' price range. We have groups like churches that use the larger charter boats to make the journey out to North Island for meaningful baptisms. And larger groups, retirement communities, church youth groups, school groups, community groups, and others will no longer have affordable access to our pristine waters. I'm just going to skip down to the end. In closing, we are so fortunate to live, work, and play in an area that has so many natural amenities. The many reasons I've talked about were asked Georgetown County members to amend the proposed ordinance to allow larger tourist charter boats to utilize Carol Ashmore Landing. Thank you.
Regan Lambert. Linda Pierce.
Good evening. I, this is regarding one of the items on tonight's agenda. The, it's the first one under the second reading, and it has to do with some property being developed or going to be developed on, in the Ohana area. And I had made some questions, and luckily, somebody answered the question, some of the questions. A Ms. Richardson, who is with the, I guess with the planning committee, answered some of my questions. And I made a couple copies of the questions. I wasn't going to read them because of the time. But if anybody would like a copy, who's on up there, I have sent a few of these to people I know about on the, with email. If anybody would like a copy of my questions, would like to answer them, that would be great. My biggest wish is for that this, if it is approved for the rezoning, that the end result is a built-out, the houses are completed, everything is completed, and eventually, people are living in the half acre lots that are going to be proposed. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sam Gary.
Hello. Hello and good evening. I'm here today to make a statement about the proposed changes to the ordinance for boat landings in Georgetown County. The stated use for public facilities in the county are for the purposes of launching and retrieving watercraft used by, used for recreational purposes and for parking vehicles and trailers used to transport such watercraft to and from boat facilities. To protect and preserve the intended purposes of the public boat facilities, the following activities are prohibited at all public boat facilities. I have a comment about the loading or unloading of cargo or passengers for hire or compensation part of this proposal. There is no need for exemptions if the landings are recreational purposes only. County Council member Bob Anderson, who worked on the proposal, said his goal was never to allow large tour boats to use the landings. These people want us to take care of their commercial needs. We can't afford the real estate to do that. Anderson said, "It's a matter of money." Large tour boats do not launch and retrieve their vessels at these landings. Large vessels pay dockage fees for their boats. On the other hand, small charter boats avoid dock fees, aka commercial needs, by launching boats for their activities. Limiting commercial activity, including large tour boats at county landings, will impede future eco-tourism growth in Georgetown County. A proposed change should be introduced that will include everybody, so the county, businesses, residents, and tourists benefit. Understandably, not all county landings can support commercial activities, but some can. I ask you to consider designating landings where commercial activity is allowed without restrictions to passengers and boat size. In summary, the discussion should be about allowing commercial use of In summary, the discussion should be about allowing commercial use of landings for providing the sheriff with a compensating clear ordinance. That's forcible. Thank you very much.
Amy Dip.
Good evening. My name is Tu Yedip. My mother brought me and my nine brothers and sisters from Vietnam back in the 1970s to escape communist rule. I have lived in Poli Islands since 1996. I clean houses for a living. A few months ago, I purchased a lot on Ford Road in Polis. I had it surveyed and want to build my home on my lot. To save my money, I did not hire a contractor because I want to build my own home. I hired someone to clear trees where I want to build my house. I did not know that I had to submit a tree plan at that time. The building permit application checklist that I received from Planning Department said I needed to submit a construction plan, site plan, tree plan, water and sewer approval along with the building permit application. I intended to submit all the necessary paperwork when the final plans were completed. However, a few weeks ago, a stop-build notice was placed on my property for cutting trees without first submitting a tree plan. I was told by the building inspector that I would have to pay a large fine and be prohibited from building for two years. The inspector said this was a new regulation just to put in place to stop big developers to punish them for clearing large tracts of land. I feel I have been caught between the county and their fight with big developers. My lot is at the end of a dead end road. I don't think any developer is going to know about my little house on my lot and that the county has stopped me from building. If I am not able to build for two years, I fear I might lose my lot. I made a mistake in not submitting a tree plan when I should have, but I didn't think the county was going to punish me as a single person trying to build her home. Thank you.
Joseph Baxter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How y'all doing tonight? My name is Joseph Baxter. I'm the owner of Baxter's Brew House Inn right here at 824 Prince Street, right up the road. We are a tourism-based business. I'm here to discuss the public boat landings. Uh, thank you several of you for reaching out, giving me a call, shooting some emails back. I really appreciate some of the responses. Uh, what I'm doing is I'm asking for an addendum to allow boats 40 feet or less to dock at Carol Campbell. It's a large enough facility. I know a lot of the individuals spoke about spending money at that boat landing to improve some of the items that were there. I don't think that any money is needed at any of, at that boat landing in regards to allowing a 40-foot vessel to just dock. They don't load and unload boats. They just load and unload tourists. And we love tourists here in Georgetown, especially downtown. They come and stay with us. They come and spend money, they dine, they go through our museums, and they tell their friends about it and they come back, and they spend money too. Um, it takes time to succeed as a small business. I know that the county owns the port now, and I would hope that they have the vision in the future to hopefully put up temporary docks to allow some of these boats to operate now until they have commercial space available at the port. Even if it's a, uh, a temporary addendum for a year, two years, three years, to go back to see if they would like to continue to allow those boats at those landings. The county needs this vision for the future. Uh, and we hope that they would allow these larger tourist boats to come down and load and unload their passengers in the county. Thank you so much for your time.
Mark Barra.
Thank you, Chairman Moran, and all the rest of those present. I'm Mark Barra, Wildlife Society Certified Wildlife Biologist. I was employed for 33 years by the Department of Natural Resource, Resources. I'm a Coast Guard veteran and have resided in this county since May of 1970. Why all the fuss over trees? Why support this ordinance? Those of you with an interest in history understand that all of the civilizations that ever been on this earth, those that cleared their forests, that overgrazed their lands and let their soils erode away. These cultures are simply no longer with us. Of those that remain, they're reduced to Third World impoverished status. Giving all due respect to my longtime friend Raymond Newton, it is possible to convert an old live oak into firewood, but it is not accomplished easily. Does anyone here understands that it's split this wonderful wood with wedges and mauls? Our Lord gave us a planet populated with beautiful animals. These animals, along with their air, water, vegetative cover that support them, they are gifts, they're gifts from God, they're sacred. We can regard them casually, but do so at our own peril. Thank you.
Everett Allen.
Good evening, and I too want to thank the council for giving us time to talk. I'm here to encourage county council to recognize and implement the wishes of the people in regards to their feeling about trees and the land use element. I've cut this way back because I lost a whole minute of a third of my time. I attended the Planning Commission workshop for the updated land use element on Thursday, October 19th, presented by the Bordeaux Company, you hired to assist the update of the land use element. First, I wondered why none of you were there. Now I hope that the, no. Cut that out. The key takeaway reported at the meeting, compiled from three public input sessions across the county, is primarily that Georgetown County is diverse in geography, natural resources, infrastructure, and development type, which needs to be recognized in the land use element. That's a quote. "The biggest concern reported by the citizens was protection and preservation of natural resources of the utmost importance," quote unquote. Once again, the people have spoken. County council seems to constantly vote on the side of developers and not the wishes of the voters. I am asking council to consider the following, but strong language to preserve trees in the land use element and natural vegetation. Protect all wooded lands. Limit tree removal to only what is necessary to build a house. Protect all species of trees. Stop clear-cut, fill and build practices. Don't chart, don't change the character of an. Hope it's a new, what council residents have been asking for for years. This may be your last chance to do what your voters have been constantly seeking before you lose the goose that lays the golden egg. I have a handout here if somebody wants to pass around the council with pictures of this pie that the.
Trapper Fowler.
Good evening, council. Trapper Fowler of the Coastal Conservation League. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And thank you county staff for all your hard work on this tree ordinance. I'm a local, born and raised in Norie County, but I've spent a great deal of time in Georgetown, including my associate's degree in forestry at Ori Georgetown Tech. Also have a master's degree from Clemson in wildlife biology. And I am also a certified wildlife biologist. Um, and I can assure you, I eat the same things you all do, but perhaps called by different names. In Ori County, we call it chicken bog versus perlo. There's still need for information on longleaf. So I encourage you to check out America's Longleaf Restoration Initiative, a movement to restore longleaf. There's even a local implant, uh, local team that includes Georgetown County as part of their jurisdiction. Not only do longleaf provide habitat for so many threatened and endangered species, but longleaf are also better adapted to high wind and more tolerant of drought and fire. They're also less susceptible to pine beetles and other pests when compared to other local pine species. We would have liked to see more protections for the occupied lots, rural overlay. Uh, again, not sure when it, where or when it makes sense to cut a grand live oak or a grand tree. But here we are. You have before you a great tree ordinance. We largely support it, and I hope you will all vote to approve it here tonight. Thank you.
Alec Tooten.
Good evening, and thank you all for getting the opportunity to address you. I'm here about the boat landing ordinance that y'all are voting on today. I thank you for the changes that have been made. I think they are a step in the right direction, but honestly, I don't think you went quite far enough. About two or three years ago, I went on a history tour of the P D River. We left here from Georgetown, went up the P D as far as Hasty Point Plantation, studying the rice plantations and the rice culture. This meeting was sponsored by the Gibbs Museum out of Charleston. I don't remember exact numbers, but there were about 45 of us on the boat, plus the captain and the mate. If it costs $50 apiece, that was a pretty good haul for Georgetown's tourism industry that day. And as we were coming back to town and everyone found out I was from Georgetown, everybody wanted recommendations of where to eat. So there was a lot of business that went into our restaurants and shopping up and down Front Street to accompany this one small trip on the bay in a boat just a little bit larger than what you already are considering approving. So personally, I would like to see a limit of 50 people in the 50-foot boat. That would give plenty of room for big crews to tour and see this wonderful ecological masterpiece we have here called Georgetown. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you listening to us.
Paul Kenny.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to address the issue on the use of public ramps by commercial operators. My name is Paul Kenny, and I am the owner-operator of a part-time LLC called Low Country Eco Adventures that provides natural history, history, and ecotours with no more than six passengers throughout the Walcomon watershed. I would like to commend council with the amendment that is now being proposed by council. I feel like that it goes a long way towards addressing the purported claims of parking issues at county boat landings and allows small operators to function. By way of clarification, and as a regular user of multiple county boat landings in the county, I can verifiably say that such claims are verifiably false unless it's on a weekend day, Saturday, Saturday or Sunday at certain landings. Unfortunately, this issue came to a head as a result of Rover Tours' use of the city's East Bay Park Boat Ramp, which is heavily used on weekends by recreational users, and complaints ensued. Rover Tours is an asset to Georgetown community and provides great economic benefits to the city. Ecotourism is a huge growing industry on the coast. And if you would pardon the pun, please don't miss the boat by precluding larger commercial boat operations from using the Carol Campbell Landing for ample parking exists. Think about it, in the future, it's very possible that large tour operators, bigger than Rover Tours, but maybe not Viking Tours, might want to stop in Georgetown to allow tourists to tour downtown historic Georgetown. Offloading a Carol Campbell onto trolleys for a tour is very doable. I'd like to suggest that in Section 63-F of the proposed amended regulations be amended to designate, to designate Carol Campbell Campbell as commercially usable on a permit basis issued by the county with appropriate guidelines for the use of so as not to interfere with recreational use. No permits would be issued when high recreational use is anticipated. Thank you for your time.
Jimmy Edwards.
Thank y'all for allowing me to be here tonight to speak. I'm just here on the zoning issue in case y'all got any questions on the second reading on 8A. So I just want to let you know I'm here to represent the customer, for the customer. If y'all need anything, just let me know. I'll be more glad to answer. Thank you.
Alex B.
With the ATAX money, I would like to know what outreach is being done to black organizations to apply for this money. It was a day meeting when people can't come. I saw one black member, Vanessa Green, two members were absent. Um, and one deputy, a white woman, came up here with a catch and her voice asking for $50,000 to restore enslaved people cabins. This is a privately owned, pay-to-enter Hopsoe plantation that has white people's weddings advertised. Apparently, a signer of Declaration of Independence enslaved or lived there. This is a white woman's tears, genuine or not, that were being weaponized to get money from the ATAX. Where is the funding for real black history information? Oh, no, it has to attract the tourists. Uh, you will not give the public a packet. So who knows what they're writing in there about these slave cabins? And you want to pay it to other county functions like litter and police and fire and those horrible medians. So weird. Also, in the NAACP lawsuit, it says in a private meeting, Councilmember Bob Anderson indicated his opposition to the development by Wedgefield and North Fraser, and he did not want to be part of a social experiment for poor people. He wanted the county to fund its own affordable housing so they could choose where it was and who lived there. And it says, Councilmember Raymond Newton raised concerns about different social and economic classes living near one another. So where is this supposed county-owned affordable housing two years later? And the suit says, Anderson stated it's going to be occupied by people who can't afford to pay all of their rent. And that's not quite affordable housing. It's got another name, whatever that means. Now the $67 million jail bond is here. The administrator said bonds are almost maxed out, but you can still do 10 or 15 million more. So you want to make up more projects, but nothing is done for reparations. Why is Asheville, North Carolina, St. Louis, California, read their PDF report, and all these other places able to set up a reparations committee? You dissolved a historical commission. We know that you can start committees.
That's our final speaker for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We move on down to our, and thank you all for the comments that y'all have made this evening. We move on down to our resolutions and proclamations. Resolution number 23-33, a resolution approving and authorizing a local option sales tax pursuant to SC Code annotated, well, SC Code, Section 4-10-10 in sequence and all necessary acts and matters related thereto, as may be required under SC law. Counselor Watson, uh, well, Madam Administrator.
Chairman, I think Madam Administrator is going to handle this.
Thank you. Resolution 2333 is the first step in beginning the process toward a referendum in November 2024 for voters to consider a local option sales tax. This revenue option was originally approved by the South Carolina Legislature back in 1990 to allow sales tax, to allow sales tax to offset property taxes. Out of 46 South Carolina counties, 32 counties have adopted this option. We ask for your consideration and your support of the beginning of this process. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on the local option sales tax.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Any questions from council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Christian, could you explain the, on the lost tax, the difference in a rural area, say, western part of the county resident, on the amount of credit, how is it is calculated for that individual in a sparsely populated area versus a residence, let's say, lives somewhere on the Walcomon neck?
The interesting thing, I think, about the local option sales tax is it really doesn't matter where the property is. These taxes are used, the sales tax is used to offset property taxes. So it depends on what your property tax actually is.
Would it be a same percentage for the west side as the east side?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that covers as well as people living within inside municipalities, is that correct?
Yes, sir. They have, they have the opportunity to also have part of their taxes offset, and part of the monies from the local option sales tax will go to the local municipalities based on their population.
That's, that's in the, based on the municipality population?
Yes, sir.
The, well, we have an estimate given to us concerning the amount that we expect to collect, be it a four or eight-year, from, who will we receive that estimate from?
That's more toward the capital project sales tax that we're going to talk about in a few minutes.
But we will not receive one on the lost estimate?
The lost, based on our calculations, and we have, we have done our projections that if this is adopted, we will receive approximately ten million dollars a year.
Ten million.
Eight million of that will be offset or a credit to folks on property taxes. We believe that when it's all said and done, the county will actually receive around two million dollars.
Around two million?
Yes, sir. Out of that ten.
To utilize for the property tax reduction. Is that, did I say that right?
No, the eight million will be used for property tax reduction.
The two million will be for other?
For the county to use how it sees fit.
Okay, so eight million. And I don't see Charis here. I want to ask you a question to discuss some numbers in it that you're not prepared for, but what percentage of that eight million will be compared to the total received in revenue for the county on property tax?
The county receives in property tax, let's just use the general fund, it's in twenty, thirty million, I think, or so, something like that.
Okay.
And there's a credit that's received on that. But of course, as you understand, a property tax that comes from a multitude, not just your house.
Yep.
Right.
So that could very be around two to three percent if that?
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Easily two to three percent.
Yes.
Which is better than going the other way.
Absolutely.
And isn't this tax also a way to, or, and I don't, I don't want to phrase this the right way, for people that live in the county and utilize everything the county has to offer that are not property owners, but it's a way that they can contribute to the county budget, so to speak?
Absolutely.
That are not homeowners.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Just, this is, the term local option sales tax here is used, I hope, as a generic term that would, would cover all of the prior seven different types of sales tax refer, or sales tax options, plus the two new ones. One of them is the one that Raymond's speaking about. I don't know the particular name of that, and the other one for the green space. This is, this is for, this, this, this resolution covers all of those. This is a genetic, a generic resolution, right?
No, sir. This is only for what's considered the lost, and that is the local option sales tax.
Only for what?
The lost. L-O-S-T is local option sales tax. Yes, there are nine different kinds, but this is a very specific one that only does a rollback for property taxes.
Okay, well, I guess you and I, I was under the impression that this was a proclamation to cover all of them, and we would decide amongst us what type of sales tax referendums we wanted to pass.
In this particular one, there are different rules for the various sales tax. This particular one is basically requires a resolution, and the question that's on the ballot that will go before the voters if the council decides to proceed.
I understand that, but I thought we were not down to the nuts and bolts of this. I thought this was just to open up the, open up the gates to consider sales tax referendums of all kinds, and you're saying that's not what this is?
That is correct.
Well, then, what about the other ones? Are we going to, are we going to consider those?
If the council decides that they wouldn't consider the other, some of the other nine taxes, certainly you can do that. The two that are on this agenda are the local option sales tax and the capital project sales tax.
Okay, so we'll be voting for a specific type of sales tax referendum here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, will we be opening the other ones up at, at meetings to follow? Or, you know, at some point, I want to consider all of them is where I'm going with this, and you leave me no choice but to vote against this for that reason, if this is my only choice.
Yes, sir.
So what about the other six or seven possibilities that people would be interested in considering for a sales tax referendum?
I think with the two that we've proposed to you tonight, the two that I think would be most advantageous to the county to do it this time, certainly, I think that option is available. You can adopt all nine, but you can really only have two.
Well, and I understand, well, I'm not even sure of that yet, but I made my point, and I want, I want everybody here to have some opportunity to discuss which of the seven or nine, which, whatever the number is now, rather than just voting on a resolution for one tonight when we haven't, we discussed them, but I'm not ready to, I'm not ready to sign up for this, and I'm just making that clear with you all. I think we need to, I think we need to defer this, and I'm making a motion to defer it until we have a chance to look at the other.
Bob, these, these two that are in front of us tonight, most council on a one-on-one basis has expressed their desire to Angela, in which we had this added on to the agenda to consider for tonight. I mean, unless the majority of, of council desires to have it put on there, it's the only way it gets on here, and we get to vote on it. Just because you're against something doesn't mean that we don't put it on there.
I thought we were gonna, we were gonna have a little bit more discussion over, over the following weeks to consider the other six or seven opportunities for sales tax referendums.
I think we're.
So if, if, if that's, if that's the way this is going to be, I'm, I'm, I'm really taken aback that we're going down this road already.
We're, we're a little bit against the time schedule here. There's not enough time to delay this.
We've got, we've got until November sixth of next year.
No, no, we don't. That's not how this works.
Well, let me say this, please. Of this rollback and the revenue that returns, quote, to the county?
Yes.
Are we identifying projects that the citizens hear how this money could be utilized for whatever? Yeah, that?
Not, not with the lost. You don't have to identify projects with the lost. With CPST, with the capital project sales tax, you do have to identify projects.
Ms. Christian, on this resolution, this is the one that, one of the ones that we went over at the tax workshop. This is a consumption-based tax that, per your numbers, if you go with ten million dollars, that would raise eighty percent, will come back to the citizens on a credit for their property taxes that they will see every year, correct?
That is correct.
And then about twenty percent will be able to be used for operations and maintenance for the county. Is that correct?
Yes.
Or any other projects that the county may require.
That is correct.
And is it also true that if we approve this, it won't have a period of performance like a five years or ten years like the others do? It can go on until somebody decides to come up with a proclamation or resolution to, to stop it?
That is correct.
Stop it. Madam?
Madam Administrator, this resolution we have in front of us this evening, isn't it solely for the county to make a decision whether to place a local option sales tax on the ballot so that the public can decide whether to go forward with it or not? Isn't that the sole purpose of this resolution, to give us that option?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's move on.
One other, one other question, Mr. Chairman. The items, so we're clear on this here, the items that are covered under this tax, could you just briefly speak on that? Because, you know, everybody's having a hard enough time now when they go to the grocery store, so.
I, you mean, who would be charged the tax?
No, the, the items.
What's being taxed?
What's being taxed?
Yeah, but maybe items that I exempt, I think, from this particular tax.
Okay. It is basically saying the gross, the gross proceeds of the sales tax within the county. There is a long, long list, and I don't have that information in front of me, but I think everybody recognizes that food is excluded and all those kinds of things. That's the big one most folks ask about. If you go to the, a lot of the foods, there are a lot of exemptions on that particular tax.
This would not affect your grocery bill?
Not. Just like the sales tax you pay when you, you go right now, will add it on, but there's so many exclusions to those tax. This deal won't affect that. This is everything else.
Thank you.
Does that also include prescribed drugs, medication?
And I believe that's an exemption now, and that will continue.
One quick question, Mr. Chairman. The eight million offset the property tax, does that include the four percent as well as the six percent, or just the four percent residents?
Talking about the homestead?
Yeah. Does it?
That is, that is everything, is how I understand it.
So it'll go for primary residents as well as secondary residents?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right, I've got another question that, just going from what I think I learned from our, when we had our workshop on this, and that is that I think it was seventy-one percent of all the funds collected for this type of sales tax would go to reducing everyone's property taxes in the county by fifteen percent? Did I remember that correctly?
Not quite fifteen percent, but it will reduce everyone. That gives the property tax bill, yes.
So that leaves twenty-nine percent of that money to be split up between the county and the three municipalities to use as they feel fit to use.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll remind everybody that these seven sales tax, tax referendum types that we had until this one was, this is a new one, I think, along with the green space one, they were all done because state law requires that we have to do everything we need to do as far as operating our county with property taxes and other taxes and fees. And this one will give seventy-one percent of the money that we would be using to operate the county and give us more funds to do things with wages and salaries and whatever it is. And, and it'll be going back to individuals, including myself, and I would certainly love to have a property tax discount, but to me, it's more important for this group up here to bring in all the revenue we can to support our duty, which is funding the functions we, we serve to all the people in this county, and I'll rest my case.
I think we've discussed this matter, but basically, it's to assist in rollback of county property taxes for all the residents of Georgetown County and municipalities, is that correct? Which is within the county of Georgetown.
Yes.
So it's really, it really assists the property owners with having to pay more excessive taxes, I'd not say excessive tax, but to reduce their tax payments is what it would do. The, the local, local option sales tax, but the, the amount of funds that's generated with assisting reducing the property taxes of all citizens of Georgetown County, is that correct?
That's correct, and the visitors that come to our community get to pay a share of, of revenue that we can use to offset expenses that we have due to the demands of tourism.
Because right now, we use the property taxes to help the operating budget of the county, so that's what assists and relieve them of some of that burden.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. You've heard all the comments and questions regarding Resolution Number twenty-three dash thirty-three. Is there a motion pertaining to Resolution Number twenty-three dash thirty-three?
So moved.
There's a motion from Counselor Elliott for adoption of Resolution Number twenty-three dash thirty-three. Is there a second? There's a second by Counselor Mercado. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose?
Abstain.
We have one, one abstention by Counselor Carolina and one opposition by Counselor Bob Anderson. Motion carries. We move on down to Resolution Number twenty-three dash thirty-four. A resolution approving and authorizing the creation of a commission pursuant to SC Code Section four dash ten dash three hundred to consider proposals and to carry out all necessary acts and matters relating thereto, as may be required under SC law for funding capital projects within Georgetown County. Madam Administrator?
This tax is slightly different. Back in two thousand fourteen, the county had a capital project sales tax. That tax was collected for four years, and over forty million dollars was collected. That built many of the facilities that we have that we're still very much able to enjoy all across the county. This will start a new capital project sales tax if it is the desire of this county to begin that process. The CPST, as it refers to, can be active up to eight years. We're not asking for a time period for this particular tax at this time, but what we are asking is for the process to begin, and the first step of that process is asking is for the process to begin, and the first step of that process is the creation of the Capital Project Sales Tax Commission. And those are the folks that will make recommendations after an appointment of at least three folks to that commission, to bring projects back to the council for their consideration, the time period that they would recommend monies to be collected. And these are brick-and-mortar projects, so to speak. It is not for operational purposes. We have estimated, again, approximately $10 million that would be collected as part of this tax. And those projects, when it is decided by that commission, will come back to the county council for consideration to decide if you want to proceed to the next steps.
Any further report from Madam Administrator? Are there any questions from council?
I have a question.
Yes.
In this case, will this be a separate referendum than the other? We'll have two different referendums?
Two different referendum questions, yes.
Thank you. I have a few questions.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. Ms. Christian, how many counties are in South Carolina? 46?
Yes.
46?
Yes.
How many do not currently have a sales tax of this kind, be it lost or the CPIT?
There are only three.
Three?
Yes.
And Georgetown being one of those three?
Yes, sir.
Why would the 43 counties have these taxes on the books? In your opinion, this?
Okay. Certainly, I think it's certainly to raise revenue, and it is also to share the burden of the demands of providing services, not to just your citizens and property taxes on their house, but to share with all the visitors and tourists and everybody else that comes to our community. It is a way to just make living here more affordable.
And still somewhat take the burden off of the?
Homeowner.
The homeowner?
Yes.
Who gets to hand off up the middle 90% of the time?
I got you.
To use a football analogy.
Okay.
The, now, the CPIT tax, if I got those acronyms right?
Yes, sir.
This is a limited, now, the resolution is in front of us, will we, when we vote on that tonight, are we determined if that is a four-year or an eight-year, or we decide at a later date?
That's really decided at a later date. That's one of the questions that will be before the committee, as they make the determination of which projects to recommend to you.
So the Citizens Committee will make that determination on?
They will make a recommendation.
Recommendation to us?
Yes, sir.
And we will, we will get their recommendations and have a final vote on it before it goes on the ballot?
Absolutely.
And then the voters of the county will have the last say-so on it?
Yes.
Not us as a council?
That is correct. For the CPST, if you remember from the last time, the projects must be listed.
In order?
Of priority, yes.
Yes.
But this resolution is only for approving and authorizing the creation of the commission?
Yes. This is the first step in that process.
I have a comment. This is a step in the right direction because this is the same thing we did back in 2011 when we passed our first sales tax referendum in this county. And we, and it was done for the same reasons that I offered up before. So we can look at infrastructure or anything else. So this is, I am an advocate of this for sure. So I will be voting yes on this because I understand this, and it's something that where 100% of the revenue that's taken in, we'll be doing something good for the county government. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions for Madam Administrator? Is there a motion pertaining to Resolution Number 23-34?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on down to third reading of ordinances. Ordinance Number 23-24. An ordinance to amend Article 3, definitions in Article 13, Tree Regulations of the zoning ordinance of Georgetown County, South Carolina, relating to tree protection, penalties, and enforcement. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had a good bit of discussion on this topic over the past few meetings. Mr. Watson and I have worked to address, hopefully, your concerns. We did give a deferral last month in order to be sure that we had thoroughly considered the proposed changes and that we had the proper wording in place to present to you. The ordinance before you shows all the proposed changes to the ordinance in red, and the most recent ones, the ones that are new since the last time, are highlighted. Some of the changes are merely rewording, better wording and clarifications, and then some are more significant and probably need to be specifically addressed. We did add some new definitions for terms land development, project, party, and person. Those are brand-new definitions, and they will affect the enforcement section of the ordinance that I'll talk about in just a moment. We did add the scientific names for all the trees that are mentioned in the ordinance. That's why those sections are highlighted. The tree list itself for the rural or the urban has not been amended since the last time we discussed it. The exception section, which is 1304, has been amended to clarify the exemption for commercial timbering and to add a definition for forestry. Obviously, these activities are both exempt, as is provided for in state law. We've added the reference to state law. We also included a new condition that requires an up-to-three-year prohibition on rezoning a tract to a higher density or to a commercial designation unless the tree harvesting that was done on the site was done as part of a previously approved development plan. This is an effort to, while we fully support the exemption and the commercial timber harvesting as an activity and forestry as an activity, this is an attempt to prevent the use of timbering or harvesting to be done as a development tool, so as a way to clear the tract so that the site may be developed. If it's going to be developed, then we would want them to save the protected or grand trees, whatever the applicable trees were for the development. Section 1305 is probably the one that you want to discuss the most, dealing with enforcement. I mentioned the definitions earlier. The fine section has now been divided into two sections. There are penalties for a party who violates the ordinance and a person who violates the ordinance. And you can see those definitions on Page 4 of the ordinance, so you'll know who we're applying to. Basically, a party would be a business or a commercial entity. A person is more of an individual who is conducting a private act on their own property, not for commercial purposes. Basically, at your suggestion, Mr. Chairman, we did add the words "up to." So a permit can be withheld for a period of time, up to three years, and the fines of $500 per inch of diameter breast height of the tree that's removed, the fines would be up to $500 per inch. The same is in place for the person, and remember, that's a private individual. If they do violate the ordinance, that would be based on a per tree, and it wouldn't exceed the fine for a 24-inch DBH at 500 per inch. And again, that language is there at "up to." That's basically to allow some discretion in applying the fines. We found that in certain circumstances, these fines can grow to very large amounts, even if grand trees are not removed. If you remove a number of protected trees, and again, on the walk of my neck, those trees are protected at 10 inches, the fines can grow to very large amounts, and this would give us some discretion in terms of, like Mr. Newton mentioned, hardship situations and other special circumstances. That is the summary of the changes since we've finished class, and I'll be glad to answer any questions or concerns you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from council?
I've got a comment over here, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad you added that "up to" in the text because that's, that gives us a lot of leeway.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you to you, Ms. Richardson and Mr. Watson, for working through this. I know there were a lot of details and a lot of public comment. For the comment that was made tonight by one of my constituents, Ms. Amy, will there be discretion? There's a possibility of discretion to be given because she would be classified as a person in this definition?
Yes, I think that would be a good example of a place where we might, would apply that discretion. I don't really, you know, want to speak to, I guess, the exact details of that case, but I think that would be an example where we would be able to apply that.
Okay, thank you.
I also concur with you that some considerations should be made in Ms. Amy's case on this because as we move forward with it, this is going to take much education to the citizens of this new ordinance. It's not like what it used to be, but the people need to be made aware of the new change.
Yes, sir, and we have already been working, in the case that this did pass or when it does pass, on a letter to go out to our developers, our tree companies, our HOAs. We've discussed holding a workshop to present this information, so it'll be clear and people will be aware of it. Again, you've heard me say it, but our goal is for this to serve as a deterrent as opposed to a revenue generator.
And can there be anything that could be added to the application so that there isn't any confusion on what's required?
In terms of the checklist that you referenced earlier?
Yes.
Sure, because I do think the tree plan is on there, but it might need to be highlighted. And we also do have a form which we can kind of go over too when we push out the information, but they kind of sign. Be aware, there are penalties. We probably need to update that form some too with this new change.
Okay, thank you.
Holly, did they get, if a developer comes to you, do they get a copy of the tree ordinance in their packet?
No, not a copy per se. Like I said, I think it is mentioned in the checklist for a building permit, but not a copy of the ordinance itself.
Holly, could you explain? I'm looking for it in here, and it's 20-something pages long. If an individual in the rural overlays on is clearing a lot in order to build a house, and they accidentally cut the wrong tree, for whatever reason, ignorance, and I don't use ignorance in a derogatory sense, is their permit going to be withheld?
So they have a permit to construct a home in this example, and they're clearing to build the home, and they cut a tree that wasn't approved to be cut?
Correct.
I think that's, you know, where the discretion will come into play. I think, you know, it depend on the tree, the size, ignorance, you know, were they aware of it? Did their contractor do it inadvertently? Could they replant? Are there other trees on the lot to save? And I think that's something I wouldn't just do in a vacuum. I wouldn't want the zoning administrator doing that. We've kind of talked, there may be three of us that are directly involved, and we want to be able to kind of talk these through and treat them on a case-by-case basis.
If there is a, in the rural overlays on again, if there is an addition being added on to a current residence, and a tree has to be removed for the addition, there's always a lot of additions going on, seemingly, and they either apply for a permit to remove the tree, say it's a grand tree, say it's a live oak, or, in worst-case scenario, they cut the tree without a permit. Will that addition be allowed, or is that the same as the previous scenario?
In the rural section?
Yes.
In the rural section, that tree won't be protected because there's already a structure there, so it's an occupied, single-family lot. He could cut the tree without a permit and without doing the addition.
Okay. Thank you, Holly. And I know this has been going on for a long time, and I know you and all your staff have put many hours into this, and I know I was one of the problems causing you this, but I really appreciate all the hard work and dealing with it with the calmness and professionalism that you guys have has been impressive. There's no way you can have a perfect ordinance, perfect law. This will never be perfect, but I think it's the best we could do under the circumstances we're dealing with. And if we get down the road and we have to tweak it to make it better, because I was worried about your staff being overwhelmed with this one ordinance. And I know you don't have the time or the staff to deal with something 100% of the time. You have too much to do. So thank you so much, and please tell your staff, we appreciate their hard work.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. I do think it's, like you said, it's, all this discussion is made for a better ordinance, and I want to thank Mr. Watson, too. He's done a lion's share of the work on the rewrites.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Okay, you've heard, you've heard the presentation from Ms. Richardson regarding Ordinance Number 23-24. Is there a motion pertaining to Ordinance Number 23-24?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Elliott for approval of Ordinance Number 23-24. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mercado. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like this to say one thing. You know, out of all the conversations that we've had on these trees, and everybody has their different opinion, what they want in their yard, and I think everybody knows that it's, the more trees you have, the better it is for the environment. There's no question about that. But we've been, we've been clearing and cutting trees in this area for over 250 years. That's what's sustained us. But in all these conversations, not one time, not one, have I heard the mention of property rights. Everybody always has an opinion on what somebody else should be doing with their property. How about the person that sacrificed and paid for that property? You must realize they have some property rights. Just because you have a degree from somewhere does not give you the right to tell people what they should or shouldn't do with their property. And I'll stand for property rights I did yesterday, I am today, and I will tomorrow, every time it comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to amend, to incorporate the revised text since there have been a variety of changes to the audience from our, that's our last reading?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Mercado to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Elliott. Let's go ahead and vote on the amendment. Those in favor of the, any discussion regarding the amended motion? Okay. All those in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. We've gone down to the standard motion with the amendment. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Let's go on down to Ordinance Number 23-32. Amendment of fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget ordinance. Ms. Young, Ms. Long, I'm sorry.
The changes to the third reading for this ordinance are in Section 6, which is the law enforcement budget. We are adding the rollover of the radio system for the detention center. And in Section 11, we are adding the grant matches for some drainage projects in the stormwater fund. So the law enforcement budget will increase by $180,700. So the law enforcement budget will increase by $180,716, and the stormwater budget will increase by $3,812, and, I'm sorry, $3,812. One more time, sorry. Any questions?
I have one. I couldn't let you go without a question. Call Garrison, tell her that. On the $180,000, you mentioned the radio?
Yeah, the radio system for the detention center.
For the detention center. And it will work inside the detention center. I know that's been a problem. I mean, it's...
It's my understanding that that is a repeater that helps it work within the detention center, but I'm not really a techy, so I'm not 100% up to date on that.
All right, well, I just had to get, I just had to get that one in there.
Okay. Any additional questions for Ms. Long from counsel? Okay. Is there a motion pertaining to, thank you, Ms. Long.
Thank you for taking it easy on me.
Sure. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23-32?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Anderson for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? Is there a motion to amend to incorporate the revised text on the amendment, on the motion?
They're moved.
It's moved by Counselor McCallum for the amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Newton. Any discussion on the amended motion? Okay. We'll go ahead and vote on the amendment motion. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carries. Now we're going back to the main motions. All of you who in favor of the main motion with the amendment, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go down to second reading of ordinances, ordinance number 23-33, to rezone approximately 2.36 acres of property located in, at the corner of Trinity Road and Sarah Drive, identified as TMS number 03-0450-024-01-05-01, for forest agriculture to one-half acre residential. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. This is a request from Mr. Edwards to rezone 2.36 acres from FA to R1 half acre, one-half acre residential. As you said, this property is located at the corner of Trinity and Sarah Drive in the Yohanna community. The track is currently vacant. The applicant filed his request to rezone in order to allow for the subdivision of four new residential parcels. The surrounding zoning in this area includes general commercial to the east, forest and agriculture to the west, and a planned development called Yohanna Landing, which is located to the north. The minimum lot size in the R1 half acre zoning district is 20,000 square feet. This property is not located in a flood zone, and the future land use map designates this track for low-density residential, which is in line with the R1 half acre proposed zoning. So a change to the future land use map is not needed in this case. We do not consider this to be spot zoning since the request involves more than two acres and the adjacent planned development at Yohanna Landing has similar half-acre lots, residential half-acre lots. There are also other R1 half acre zoning districts in the vicinity along Trinity Road. The planning commission heard this rezoning request in September and recommended approval for the rezoning to R1 half with a vote of six to zero. Only one person spoke with some questions at the public hearing. Those were addressed, and I'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from counsel regarding ordinance number 23-33? Hearing none. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23-33?
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of ordinance number 23-33.
We have a motion for adoption from Counselor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll move down to ordinance number 23-34 to amend the future land use map for a 6.09 acre parcel located on the end of Oak Ridge Lane in the Sampit community of Georgetown, identified as TMS number 01-0425-043-22-03, from medium to low-density residential. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. We haven't had one of these in a while, but items 8B and 8C will go together as the same, the rezoning and the future land use map change for the same parcel. This request is from a Ms. West, asking to rezone 6.09 acres, and the rezoning request is from VR10 or Village Residential, 10,000 square foot lots, to Forest Agriculture FA. This property is located off Oak Ridge Lane in the Sampit section of Georgetown. Their request is to downzone the parcel to FA in order to allow for livestock on the property. The new property owner has indicated they would like to have a horse stable with a training arena and open pasture on the site. As I stated, this is located at the end of Oak Ridge Lane, which is a private unpaved road that currently only has a couple of residential structures. The surrounding zoning is VR10 to the north and west, it's also FA zoning to the south and the east. The minimum lot acre requirement for FA is one acre. This parcel is also located in a flood zone X, so it's not in a regulated flood zone. The future land use map actually designates this track as medium density. So this is, again, a downzone request to low density, and that's why we have the future land use map change on your agenda. We also do not consider this to be spot zoning. The applicant's rezoning request is for more than six acres of land. It stands on its own, and either way, it is also directly adjacent to contiguous FA zoning. Planning Commission also heard this request in September, recommended approval for the rezoning. No one signed up to speak under the public hearing. Planning Commission also recommended six to zero to change the future land use map from medium density to low density to facilitate the request.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson from counsel?
How far is this property from the community park owned by the county?
That is a good question. Is, is off Powell, kind of after you make the curve, Mr. Carolina?
Off Powell Road? When you make the left off of 17A? I'm sorry. When you make the left off of 17A, the park is right there when you make onto Powell Road, and when you go around the little curve, Oak Ridge is the next left.
And it's to the end of Oak Ridge?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, as Richardson, no issue with the county on that rezoning, on that property, and this is going to be a livestock stable?
The proposal is for a horse stable and arena, yes.
And a residence?
Potentially, there could be a residence. There is six acres, so they could subdivide and have a residence at one acre and the horse stable on another, or those are compatible uses. They could be on the same track.
And at the planning commission, there was no opposition?
No, sir. We did not receive any opposition.
Okay.
Any additional questions for Ms. Richardson from counsel? Okay. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23-34?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the amendment of the future land use, for the read, the amendment of the property to low-density residential.
We have a motion from Counselor Carolina for adoption of ordinance number 23-34. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We are going down to ordinance number 23-35. You've heard the presentation from Ms. Richardson. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23-35?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Elliott for adoption of ordinance number 23-35. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. You're still with Ms. Richardson. Ordinance number 23-36, an ordinance to amend the Georgetown County comprehensive plan to add the new residency element.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have been making progress on the comprehensive plan elements, bringing them to you as they are completed and recommended by the planning commission. This one is a new element, so this is a little different in that it's not a revision of an existing element, but it is brand-new. Section 629-510 of state law required a new resiliency element, and counties are to consider the impacts of flooding and other hazards on the community, and this element must be incorporated into the jurisdiction's comp plan when they do their five- or 10-year review. Obviously, we are here in a 10-year review, so this one was added to our list. Because it is so new, it's difficult to find jurisdictions that have completed this process. In a quick search today, I only found Charleston and Lexington in terms of counties that have done there so far. We hired a company called SVP as a consultant to help us draft the plan, and what you have in front of you, I believe, is the fourth revision from their work. We started the process with a kickoff public meeting, and I think several of you attended. That was back in January of this year, where SVP presented the data they had collected and their analysis, and they collected input on what else needed to be included in the draft document. In May, they had a draft that was ready and presented, and we held a second meeting to receive feedback on the draft. We feel those meetings were well-attended. We had informative discussions with experts in the field, from scientists to environmentalists, policymakers, as well as concerned citizen groups from our county. Final document you have in front of you includes background information on our hydrology and geography. There's an inventory of all the hazards that can potentially affect our county, of which there are many. There are also sections that look at resilience and the data and the analysis that they've done, which is very thorough. They also reviewed our existing resilience documents, such as the hazard mitigation plan. The first analysis, and I won't go into a whole lot of detail about this because it is not my field of expertise, but the first analysis that they did was called the BRIC, and that is a baseline resilience indicator that is a tool provided by USC. That information did not yield a lot of helpful data because it showed Georgetown County had medium resilience when compared to other U.S. cities and counties, which didn't give us a lot of information. So the consultant then performed another analysis that I believe they actually created, called a composite community resilience index, where they used 29 different variables in order to determine social vulnerability and resilience for different segments of our county. The study showed, and there's more information on this, if you want to know the down and dirty details in Appendix 2 of the document, but basically, the bottom line is that several census tracts around Merrill's Island and Garden City were shown as the least resilient for our county, along with areas in Andrews and portions of downtown Georgetown. The most resilient tracts were those rural tracts further inland and areas that had good levels of what they call community resilience, such as Paulie's Island. As with any of our elements, the main meat or the substance of the document is in the recommendations, of course. Those can be found on page 35. They talk a lot about collaboration on resilience-related goals, making priorities for the socially vulnerable populations that we've just described. They talk a lot about different categories of resilience. One example is food systems resilience or economic resilience. It also suggests that we look at social vulnerability in our preparedness, mitigation, and disaster recovery plans, and there are some sections that refer to land use practices in terms of sustainability and reflecting that in our zoning and stormwater regulations. Planning Commission, in addition to kind of sponsoring the two public meetings that we had, also held a public hearing at their September meeting. On this document, there was one person there that spoke with some recommended changes. The commission reviewed those and recommended approval for the document with those changes, which have been included in what you have in front of you tonight. As with any element, there will need to be a public hearing before this body, before a final third reading can be given.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson from counsel?
I have a comment.
Yes?
First, I'd like to say, I've waded through this thing, and it's amazing the detail that you have in it. Great job for you and your contractor. The only thing that I think is missing, and everybody on this panel has heard me preach about flood modeling in the past, you know, that is an important factor in resilience. And we started working on it right after Hurricane Florence, when we got that bogus flood map, and people didn't know which way was up, and everybody was in an uproar. And we need, we're desperately leading this county because we are at the base of the PD basin, which you went into great detail to explain. I was impressed. But we're at the end of the trail, and we need flood modeling that we can trust. And so far, the legislative branch and the governor's office have let us down on that. They came up with a flood commission that was great back before COVID and did a lot of good things. They were on the right track. And then when COVID came along, everything just stopped. So I would, would love to make a text amendment in there, and I think if you look at page 41 of this document, it might be a good place to do it, to put a paragraph in there about we desperately need flood modeling that the citizens of Georgetown County can trust. Thank you.
Okay. You've heard the presentation from Ms. Richardson regarding ordinance number 23-36. Is there a motion pertaining to it?
They're moved.
It's moved by Counselor McCallum for adoption of ordinance number 23-36. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. We move down to ordinance number 23-37, an ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan for Georgetown County to add the revised community facilities element. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. This is an element that's a little more familiar to all of us, and this is one that staff handled in-house. The community facilities element of the comp plan, and this is a revision to an existing document. We did involve several stakeholders, lots of which are fellow departments of ours in Georgetown County, but also the Water and Sewer District, the school district, the city, state offices, the library facilities, other cultural facilities were all involved in compiling this document. The purpose of the element, again, as provided in state law, is to provide an overview and assessment of the necessary services and facilities required to meet the needs of our county's residents. The element has to cover a broad range of topics, including the water supply, sewage supply, solid waste and disposal, fire protection, EMS, general government facilities, education, libraries. And I think you'll see all those have been covered in the document that's in front of you tonight. We also have 12 goals with multiple objectives that relate to each goal. You'll see they run a wide variety of topics, including parks and recreation, infrastructure, collaborating with other government facilities, but they all relate to the betterment of Georgetown County citizens. Again, the planning commission held a public hearing on this back in September. There was no one present to speak at the meeting, and the commission recommended approval for the document six to zero. This is another element that we will need a public hearing on before final approval.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson from counsel?
I just have a comment. In the comprehensive plan, which is a guideline for the county, a lot of these goals are goals, and there's not a lot of ways to fund them. In this particular case, I just want to go back to the resolutions for the taxes that both the salt and, sorry, the CPST and the loss tax would help offset those costs to get to those goals.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say, I'd commend the commission for putting this in place because this is an issue that needs to be addressed in the county. In my district, number one, we have a situation where we built a $7 million library that's on a septic tank system. Hopefully, when the extension goes through for water and sewer, the North Santey Community Center will then get sewer to the current community center that's currently on a septic tank system. tank system. We have St. James Sainte Wellness, a medical facility on Powell Road, which provides health care to many people in District 3. And actually, they have seven locations within Berkeley, Charleston, and Georgetown County that's on a septic tank system. And this leads the way to finally improve the health conditions of the people in Georgetown County. And I hope when we work with our partners in this endeavor, that it also helps with economic development. We have areas in the rural area that we're trying to market for some sort of development, either commercial, industrial, or residential, and there's no sewer or water in the area. So all of these things need to work together. We need to, we, the council, need to have serious dialogue with our partners because a lot of these things, the lack of water and sewer in the unincorporated areas, these have gone on for many years. In the Sanford community, you have one side of the community that has water and sewer, and the other part, it only has water. Septic tanks are failing. Field lines are backing up. Raw sewage on properties. We're in 2023, so we have to upgrade and bring our county into a better situation that would be an amenity and an infrastructure that will help in attracting further business and also residential development. So again, I applaud the Planning Commission for moving forward. And when we have further meetings with the public, this will be further emphasis in something I believe they will be very happy to see. But the main thing is coming up with ways that can fund these projects. In the Sanford community, you have one of the lowest annual medium incomes in Georgetown County. But one of the last quotes given to the people in that community was for a water system that's going to be $10 million. Unattainable. And it dropped down to $2 million. Unattainable.
Councilor Carolina, let's get back to the ordinance.
Well, I'm giving you an explanation of the issue, and I'm commending Ms. Richardson and the Planning Commission for the work done. So I'm emphasizing that, yes, move forward. Let's get this done. We applaud you for your efforts.
Thank you. Any questions for, any additional questions for Ms. Richardson pertaining to ordinance number 23-37? Okay. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23-37?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion for the amendment and the adoption of ordinance 2327 for the revised community facilities element.
You have a motion for Councilor Carolina for adoption of ordinance number 23-37. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on to ordinance number 23-38. An ordinance to amend Chapter 6, Section 6-3 of the Georgetown County Code of Ordinances pertaining to public boat landing regulations. Councilor Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is a revision of existing ordinance, and it is pretty much a rewrite from title all the way through. We cleaned up some of the language. We've added a few definitions, I think, or at least clarified them. We've added a provision to allow for county events. We're getting many county events in, or county-sponsored events. So the council, I think, is pretty familiar with it now. There's been a lot of discussion on it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, you've heard the report from Attorney Watson. Any questions from council pertaining to ordinance number 23-38?
Counsel? And Ms. Richardson? Have we gotten any sort of feedback from any other cities? Charleston, for instance, any towns that have commercial touring allowed in their jurisdiction? To make a decision on, number one, and my thoughts on it, and it's going back and forth on where we're going with Georgetown County and emphasizing and promoting tourism. Tourism is here. Either the vehicle that drives up and down Front Street and makes its circle down to East Bay. But have we had any studies that come in from other cities that have commercial tourism as part of their attraction to their city? We've heard from the citizens concerning Carol Campbell Boat Land. Is there any way possible we could do some further studies to see the possibility of adding to that facility a dock and boardwalk, not only for one current 40-passenger boat, but for others that could possibly come and want to do tourism, ecotourism in this county? Past resolution talking about all the highlights of Georgetown County, the waterways, et cetera, et cetera, the good things, the possibility of tourism on the rivers. Have we done our total research to see if this we could possibly make happen?
Not sure I understand which of the questions that were asked. One, we did look at ordinances relating to boat landings or boat facilities in other counties. The, as far as a study on tourism, no, sir, that was not done in this, in connection with this ordinance. I think it'd be beyond the scope of it. The second question, which I think you asked, is could that study be done? I think the answer to that is yes, the study could be done. But the purpose of this ordinance is, one, to clean up some of the problems we had in the prior ordinance relating to boat facilities and to set the parameters of what we're going to allow. I mean, the boat facilities now are, as I have always been, as I understand it, for recreational facilities. Once you start opening up to commercial, you get on a slippery slope, sir. But that's something that the council would have to decide if they wanted to go down that path.
Any further questions for Attorney Watson?
Yes, just this one. Mr. Watson, could you just explain to us why we stopped at 30 feet?
Yes, sir. I, in working on this ordinance, I did speak both with magistrate, who has had some cases come before him, spoke with the sheriff, got input from various, from council members. The 30 feet seem to be, we've got a number of privately-owned vessels at 30 feet that are launching. Some of the, what's called commonly a six-pack license or six-pack captain's license, is for no more than six passengers for fishing. 30, 30 feet is what is typically seen going out, particularly out of Merle's Inlet, both for privately-owned vessels as well as for the six-pack. Once you start getting beyond that, I think it's also a question of, are you starting to overload the capacity of the facilities we have, as well as not just the capacity as far as the volume of traffic going through, but what the facilities were designed to handle? So at some point, there needed to be a cutoff, and 30 feet seemed to be a reasonable option or a reasonable size.
Would our biggest boat landing, the Carol Campbell, as I refer to it? Could it handle? It definitely could handle larger vessels as compared to some of our other landings.
What do you mean by, you mean launching?
Yes.
I don't know. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to speculate on what size it could handle out there for launching.
It's not a perfect landing where it is, but it's, it's a, it could handle a pretty big boat. Is there, after all the discussion and everything that we've been through among ourselves and as well as you, is, there's this no way we could make accommodations for the 40-foot charter? Say to the extent of it's open on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday only for that size vessel? There's just no way that we could accommodate that business at this landing? All the other landings, of course not. They're, they're, the size, the capacity that they can handle, there's no question that that's not doable. But maybe that one landing, that is there no way we could accommodate this business?
When you put it as, is there no way? I think the answer, well, I had a friend once, he used to say, "Any architectural endeavor is feasible if properly funded." Not trying to be glib, but I mean, is there no way? Well, yes, there's a way if properly funded. But the other question that the council's going to have to ask itself as a matter of public policy, if at the Carol Campbell, then why not somewhere else? And once we start down the path at the Carol Campbell, then, you know, how far does council want to go with this? The other question, though, when you talk about tourism, you do still have some of these ecotour or touring boats, larger vessels, at Front Street in the slips there. Now, if you open up Carol Campbell without charge, then are, you know, are now the folks that are paying for these slips, well, why should they pay? Now they're going to come to Carol Campbell. At what point are you going to start overloading Carol Campbell for a purpose for which it was never really intended? And then also with any ordinance, you have the enforcement question. Who's going to be down there, you know, to enforce it, whatever days and hours you set, or to make sure that they, you know, vessels aren't coming at days and hours which they aren't allowed? You know, is it, is there no way? Well, yeah, there's a way if, you know, if you want to carry the burden of it and if you want to start down that path.
So, so if we allow one, we write that in there, then there's, could be two, three, four. How many ever shows up have the, have the right to use that landing?
Right.
And, and that's our concern for adding that size vehicle to that landing. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Well, suppose, for instance, we set a game plan in effect. You know, if this is, I'm certain tourism of this nature is going to be coming. But to have the foresight to best utilize one area of Carol Campbell Boat Landing and building docks for mooring, and if these business owners, I mean, the county could put in something where they could lease a space on the dock, that's not like, I mean, if we want to put in some control, whoever's in that business could possibly, the county could mandate the leasing of the space. We could put a limitation on the number of boats that could be moored there. And to come up with some creativity, because the tourism is here for Georgetown. It seems like it's a method right now to slow it down as for the business that the 40-passenger boat is in effect. I believe we could put some safeguards and control in place and rules and regulations in place to allow this.
I have a question about the, and I don't know that you know the answer, but from the public comment addressed the tourism for the city of Georgetown, that it's walkable. Why isn't the city dock able to accommodate this? Why is this coming to the county location?
Well, I think, well, one, your question says, why isn't the city dock able to accommodate this? I wouldn't, not sure I would accept the premise. So as I understand it, the city dock was and is. There are, I think, two, presently, two boats down there now, the large pontoon-style boats that can accommodate it. And I believe there was a third that lost their slip. Okay? So it's, Mr. Carolina introduced a whole new element to this when he said we could create places where boats could moor. Now, that's different than loading, unloading, launching. Now you're talking about a whole different thing there. So I think there are slips, I don't know how many, but, you know, slips are available at the city or were available for some of these types of boats, and tourism has been here. This type of tourism has been going on and still is going on. So, you know, I can't answer for the city, but I wouldn't accept the premise that the city, or those slips on Front Street boardwalk haven't been accommodating this. I think they have been, or at least that's my understanding. And, you know, one of those boats lost their slip.
Thank you.
Can I, can I add something there? I think that the slips that we're focusing in on belong to the maritime museum. They don't belong to the city. If I'm not mistaken.
Does the city have a public landing?
A public landing?
Yeah, where they could.
You mean for launching?
Yes.
East Bay Park, I think, that's the city's.
Okay, that's what I was talking about.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the slips. I'm sorry, Attorney Watson. No, I was just saying, Ms. McCalla, I thought you were talking about the slips, not a place for launching.
Oh, sorry. I was talking about East Bay Park, the public launching.
Yeah. The, Mr. Carolina, I think you were alluding to the fact that we'd be getting into, into the marina business. And, you know, I think that's an area as a county we probably don't want to get into.
I'm not saying we're entering the business. If you're looking at the attributes of this county, and people make day trips to Georgetown, and all the comments made on how you bring everything together, tourism, there's street tourism, riding the little jitney around, I'm sure he pays a vendor's license or something to do that business there. We set up some sort of control with the ecotourism business, the bigger boats. I mean, you know, you can start one place, and as the things move in progress, there might be other things that we need to do to encourage further business.
But I think that, and I'm just, I just want to understand what you're talking about.
You can license.
Are you speaking of, are you speaking of expanding the Carol Campbell Dock to have facilities that could be leased to these larger party boats?
You say party boats, too, to look into the possibility.
That, that's a different, that's a different problem, though, correct? I mean, we need to kind of divide and conquer this thing.
Ms. Anderson.
He asked me a question. He's asked, is it a problem?
It went to be asked the question and answered. Thank you.
Jay, in your opinion, if we open up Carol Campbell to this type of thing, is that going to open us up to having to do it for the rest of the landings throughout Georgetown County? If somebody is so inclined to push that point? Like Merle's Inlet, if they, will they use the argument, well, you did Carol Campbell, so why can't we do it here? And then force us to open everything up to it?
Well, it's foreseeable someone could make that argument. I don't know that they could force you to open it up. But again, I think if you go back to the, the purposes for these, any of them, any of these boating facilities, and the legislative intent behind the ordinance, to start moving in the direction of identifying and, I mean, purposely saying we're going to allow commercial operations out of the landings, you're, you're opening up another whole area for consideration, and I think it's going to become very unmanageable at some point for the council. But again, you know, it's a question for council. It's a policy decision for council to make. Do they want to go in that direction? And the facilities that you have now just simply were not designed for that.
Because at the Carol Campbell facility, we have an O&M cost there also, don't we, to maintain that facility and, and the county puts that within the county's budget to make sure that the facility is operating properly, that the grounds are kept, the pavement is up to par without a punch, you know, potholes and those type things. So wouldn't that increase the cost at the facilities also?
I would, I would expect it would. I mean, if you're increasing traffic, you're going to increase, increase the wear and tear, which will increase the cost of maintenance.
Do I take all that into consideration?
Yes, sir.
Well, if you want to bring that up, take a look at Campbell Boat Landing parking during a rain.
What is, what is it like doing, what is it like doing a rain?
It's cracking. There's water on it. So, I mean, if you want to talk about maintenance, it's whether or not maintenance. So, I mean, if you want to talk about maintenance, it's whether or not maintenance has been maintained on it as we speak.
I think you, I think you just substantiated my point. Anyway, let's move on. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23-38?
So moved.
The move for adoption of ordinance number 23-38 is there a second by Councilor Anderson? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor of adoption of ordinance number 23, of approval of ordinance number 23-38? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, I'm trying to get the council. I know we have four approved.
He voted for.
Five. Okay, five, four, two against. Okay. Motion carries. We are going down to first reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 23-39, in the first reading, it'll be just read into the record by title only. Ordinance number 23-39, an ordinance to amend the Georgetown County Code of Ordinances, Chapter Seven, Building Construction Related Activities. Article Six, Impact Fees, to incorporate the Capital Improvement Plan and Development Impact Fees Study prepared by Tish Face and dated November 22, 2023, and update the associated impact fee amounts. We are moved down to the approval of minutes from our meeting of October 10, 2023. Is there a motion for adoption of our regular council meeting of October 10, 2023?
So moved.
It's a move for approval by Councilor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McCallum. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Is there any further business coming from council pertaining to the agenda? Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor McCallum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? You stand adjourned.[1728.15]